All right. If I could get a motion that we only discuss those items, we went into closed session for one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 Personnel Matters, BZA reappointment, and then two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8 Consultation with Legal Counsel regarding specific legal matters, Parking Lot Licenses Agreement 37 West Main Street LLC and Parking Lot Licenses Agreement 89 West Main Street LLC.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
I'm staying.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. Now, if you would rise, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Ratliff and the invocation by Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening, please watch over us, and as we conduct the business of our town, please grant us the wisdom to do so. We thank you for your continued grace and mercy, and in your name, we pray. Amen.
I'd like to welcome the guests here and online. Thank you for coming out. As I've said before, it's nice to see people in here. Shows that you care. All right. Modifications to public session, please?
Mr. Mayor, move that we modify the public session under item nine, Presentations, and add B, a presentation on manufactured and modular housing. That was a mouthful.
Second.
May I get a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
Aye.
All right. We'll start with Resolution 2024-24, Resolution in Observance of National Emergency Service Week, May 19th through the 25th, 2024. Whereas, in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas, in observance of this week, the Town Council desires to recognize the local emergency medical services personnel who would, who put the needs of their communities above their own as they respond to crisis, treat injuries, and save lives. And whereas, the unwavering commitment of EMS providers to public service often come at the cost of their own physical well-being, mental health, and precious time with loved ones. And whereas, it is vital that we share our appreciation for the selfless EMS professionals who provide life-saving services every day and risk their lives each time they answer the call of a service. And whereas, the week of May 19th through the 25th is an opportunity to honor the men and women who provide services to the citizens of the town of Pulaski. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pulaski, of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this 21st day of May, 2024, that the Town Council, as part of National Emergency Medical Service Week, does hereby recognize and commend EMS professionals dedicated to the community and their fellow citizens. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will be adopted this 21st day of May, 2024, by the duly recorded vote of the town of Pulaski, Virginia. And if I can have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-24, Resolution in Observance of National Emergency Services Week, as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now, if I could have the gentleman from EMS, if they could come down, please, the fireman.
Who's got the speech prepared?
Ran out of room there, huh? One of these days, I'll work it out.
All right, council, y'all gonna get the picture with them? Get up there so we can put it on FaceTime. Where's the rest of them at? Busy?
That's the shift. And then Jeff, he is at conference? Jeff on the conference for vacation this week. He's got a few days off.
All right. Make that look good, will you? Get on the front page. Got it. Don't worry.
Next on our agenda, we have Resolution 2024-25, Resolution in Observation of, observance, I'm sorry, Resolution in Observance of National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. Whereas, public works service are important to the health, safety, and well-being of the town of Pulaski citizens. And whereas, those services can only be provided through dedicated and trained public work professionals, including public sector employees who oversee the town's streets, parks, and grounds, the water and sewer departments, vehicle and equipment maintenance, and services, water treatment, utilities, and pump stations, and all general public property and building maintenance. And whereas, the service and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation and success of public work systems. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th anniversary, or annual National Public Works Week, recognized by the American Public Works Association. And now, therefore, it be resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this 21st day of May, 2024, that the Town Council does hereby recognize May 19th through 25th, 2024, as the, as this year's National Public Works Week, in recognition of the contributions of public works employees and the services that they provide to the community. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted this 21st day of May, 2024, by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of Pulaski. And if I could have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-25, Observance of National Public Works Week.
Second.
May I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. Kim, if you could come up, please?
Yeah, we got that speech coming out.
Here we go. Pulaski above you. Very nice.
Good photo. All right. Kim, get in there. Yeah. Hey, Kim, let me get a picture with you. You can? Come on, give it to me. So ironically, I cut my teeth at Public Works and local events, so I've got a spot for all of local government events. It's a little bit of Public Works. Very well deserved.
Wait. There's a shot.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. All right. Next is the Parking Lot License Agreement, 37 West Main Street LLC. How do you want to, Mike?
Do you want to?
Yeah, what we've got here, we've got a developing Main Street that we're very pleased with, and, you know, I know Pulaski, your biggest goal was to have a parking problem, and we're well on that, on our way to see that. So with the above, above-ground businesses with housing, we're in need of parking for some of those apartment complexes, et cetera, up and down Main Street, not only there, but all of downtown. But I would just like to have council's approval to move forward with negotiating contractual understandings with different, different businesses on Main Street for parking.
So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the town manager to execute licensing agreements for parking on Main Street and other associated downtown areas, as is P and the town attorney approve.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
I'm staying.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Moving right along, we'll go to the presentations. The first one is the splash pad update. Nate, Nate, repass.
Mr. Nate, all right. Right. So this project has been incoming for a while now. We originally planned for it back in the fall, hit some delays with air timing, and since it's a summer-only location, we'd kind of been waiting to get everything in. All of the equipment has been put in by our installer. This is video from earlier this week of the splash pad in action out at Cool Springs. So we are still working to finish some of landscaping, the bathrooms, and clearing out the parking lot at that location, relining it for parking, finalizing some of our things. But we would like to announce a grand opening on Friday, May the 31st, at noon. We'll do a ribbon cutting there, as that's the last day of school for Pulaski County Schools, and I believe they get out three hours early, right after our grand opening. We're hoping we'll see a lot of kids out there enjoying the splash pad. So I believe I described kind of how it worked before. It's a pass-through system. Somebody goes in, in that central bollard, you hit a button. Currently, it's doing for like 57 seconds of water features, and then it cuts off, and you have to go back and re-hit that button. We will have set hours, so there's a controller out there where we will set on and off hours. During the off hours, the button won't work. During the on hours, it will. We're hoping to aim those sometime around like 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., weekdays and weekends. Part of the renovations out there have included bathroom renovations for the Cool Springs location. We are currently looking towards getting a contractor to take care of the cleaning and opening and close of those bathrooms. I know that's been an issue in some of our other parks, where having somebody close it after hours, having somebody get in there and clean it. We just don't really have the resources in-house for a lot of that. I know the train station bathrooms kind of fell victim to that, where they've only been open for events, because we don't have someone to open them early in the morning, to close them late at night, to come in and clean in between. So we're hoping that we can get kind of a contract basis for that over the summer for both the splash pad and the train station bathrooms, so that we can have the park bathrooms open and available there again.
Does council have any questions? Comments?
Questions in regards to, I heard you answer a ton of questions already, but signage-wise, as far as liability signage, directional signage, you know, things of that nature, just to make the, you know, participants aware of the functions, aware of, you know, the rules, things of that nature, what's already planned?
So we currently have a splash pad rules sign that is generated and in my office waiting to be installed. That was read over and approved from our police chief. Town manager had a look, our engineering department looked over that. It includes, we, that the facility is unsupervised, there's no lifeguard on duty, certain things about adults accompanying children at the splash pad, some information about proper attire and things that are banned, like food and glass items, soaps, detergents, that sort of things that we don't want at the splash pad. It's a fairly large rules sign, because we do have a lot of information for that. I think it's 40 by 36 inches. That will go at the entrance to the splash pad, so if you've driven by the location, you've kind of seen where it's at. If not, from the parking lot, there's about 20 feet of sidewalk, and then you're on the splash pad. It's about a 40-foot circle of working water features, and then there's a five-foot apron on both sides, so it's about 50 feet around. So most folks will be going from the parking lot, and they'll pass directly by a rules sign to get there. As part of our development plans later, we intend to connect the Dora Trail up via some gravel pathing, so that folks there that are riding bikes or jogging on the trail, that sort of thing, can come into the other side of the splash pad. And when we install that, we'll have some rules signage there as well. As far as directional signage, we intend to put up some signs on the Dora Trail, so that folks that are on the trail get pushed that way. Some information at the kiosks along the way, so, including the kiosk that's at the train station, including the board that's at the junction of the New River Trail and the Dora Trail, and then hopefully some road signage as well. I don't have any specific signs generated at this point for the roads. We're still looking at where that would make the most sense, most likely either end of Dora Highway as you turn in. So hopefully, we'll have some information there. We're also going to look towards a large push of having, we'll have a new sub-page on the town website, just about the splash pad, rules, regulations, operating hours, that we'll update regularly. We'll push these updates to Facebook, and hopefully out through some of the local media. The hours are variable, so we can change those at any time for the on-off hours. So if we get some cold weather, and it's cold in the mornings, we're not noticing that it's being used, we can tighten those hours down or run them later in the evening. If we have events programming, we can also change those. So we hope to really be out there with some of the internet signage and information, so that, you know, our hours on Google are up-to-date constantly, that our hours on the website, and that we're pushing out news, so that folks know what's happening at the splash pad.
And Nate, you may have, you may have addressed this. The, one of the thoughts that I had regarding the crosswalk there from Heritage to the, to what, now the splash pad, that's of concern. I know just crossing there, sometimes cars are traveling at a higher rate of speed. I don't, I don't know, and you guys may have already looked at this from a safety perspective, any flashing lights or, or reduced speed. I don't, I'm not even sure what the speed limit is through there.
So it should be 25, I believe, is the signs on both ends of Dora Highway. I believe so. And currently, we're hoping to push people to the parking lot, so that they park there, they have the bathrooms available, so that they can change and go directly to the splash pad. So I haven't looked heavily into that. That's something I'll need to coordinate with our engineering department on, since it affects the roads there. I'm not sure if we can do in-the-street signage, like is in front of the courthouse, or...
Well, and it may be some, it may be, I don't know what the process is, but just, you know, like I said, my concern, kids at Heritage running across the street because they see a splash, splash pad. So I don't know who that would entail, to maybe get flashing lights in that area or something that's very, that will get driver's attention.
And that's something I can certainly talk with our engineering department about.
Okay.
Since it affects the streets, I'm not sure exactly what, what's required there.
Okay. It looks good, though. Good job.
And this is also adjustable, so the, all of the jets are separated into different, different quadrants, so there's six different sets of jets. Some of those may have as few as two or as many as six. We can adjust the pressure on those individually, and we can also interchange them out. So all of these jets are on the same base in the concrete, so in future, if we decide to do work there, we can just swap nozzles out, or we can swap existing nozzles to different positions. So we can move things around and keep it interesting. They are set in the concrete, of course, but we can aim some of the smaller sprays, move the misters, that sort of thing there.
Now, you said, would the, would the restrooms be functioning starting the 31st?
We are hoping to have them functional at that time, since we're currently working to try and find contractors to keep them clean and have that open and close. They may only be open limited hours to begin with, like a nine to five, while we have someone on staff. It's kind of that outside of hours. The only folks we have on staff would either be fire or police, and because they're always responding to calls, we don't want to add another thing to their plate. We can't really rely on that. So we'll keep them open during business hours and may do some weekend hours as possible on overtime to begin with. But we hope to have the bathrooms functional for our grand opening. I think the, everything's being installed now. The only equipment we're still waiting on is maybe doors.
I like the idea that in a, in a near future, whoever the powers might be, on that upper end, up there, maybe the next couple of years, take a look, maybe putting a, maybe a set of basketball courts and other pickleball court on the far end, for our folks on that side of the town, or, or young kids, so they're not trying to travel all the way around to get over to these other ones. Because that's, that's a good spot, that far, far end down there. That would be something in the near future.
And we really hope that this will push kind of a revitalization of Cool Springs. I know, like, currently, the locker rooms that were there for football were just kind of locked and left, so it's been an underutilized facility for a number of years, so hopefully this will bring some attention back there. We're also working to clean out the other spaces, so that we can do either equipment storage and have other, other things going on in the park, or potentially push some events in the park, so that we can have some activities down there.
I'd like to see events there, too. I mean, we don't always have to have them right here. We can move them around and have different things different places.
Yeah, all the, over, the years, the dog parks have came up quite a bit. Has, has that ever been considered for making, I mean, that's a massive, you know, field that we've, you know, more or less just has been mowed for a decade, you know?
Unfortunately, we run into two small issues there. One is the runoff and the proximity to the creek. Part of the idea of a dog park is so that you're localizing your dog waste away from your water source, having that as a dog park. If people aren't picking up after themselves, you're concentrating that bacteria and issue very close to the creek there. We have also been trying to keep this open and available, so that we can reuse the facility. I mean, we have beautiful lights, we've got fantastic goals, we've got locker rooms right there, there's a giant scoreboard that we haven't used, so we're, we're still kind of holding that in reserve, in hopes that maybe we'll reuse some of that, as opposed to just completely changing it. So for example, this is out of the way of the field, so the field can still be used. If we develop at the other end, we can still use the field for a while, so it hasn't, it's been on our list, but we, we've looked past it to some other locations first.
Great work.
One question?
Yeah.
Have we thought about, because we've got all these new, great recreational facilities in town, and I know, you know, most people know about them, but I'm wondering if there's a, you know, they put out together those little maps that are sort of like, not like to scale kind of things, but just to show where everything is in town and could be, you know, on our, you know, on that kind of stuff, as opposed, you know?
And so this is on the radar for the Pulaski County Caricature Map that you may have seen come out a while back.
Okay.
A lot of the county stuff. This is projected for their updates. We had initially talked about getting it on there, but we're waiting for it to be online, so we're projected to have it on there. I know, for example, the kiosk at the train station has a map that has some points of interest highlighted, that's a little bit old, so we're looking at potentially updating that as well.
That's what I was thinking about.
Adding some things, at the bike park of things. And then, also going back to your comment, because this is a pass, pass-through system, we are allowing dogs on the splash pad. So folks can bring their dogs up to the splash pad, it won't hurt the systems at all for that. So as long as they're leashed friendly, and we have that in the rules, we are allowing that, so that folks can go down there, walk their dogs on leash, pick up after them, and enjoy the splash pad.
With the pursuit of a contractor to handle the restrooms, will that contractor handle the restrooms at the train, train station as well?
That is what we're currently hoping for.
So increase access to those restrooms at the same time?
And, and we're looking at how we can work that. Again, it's partially just based on the fact that town employees work from about 7:00 a.m. from Public Works till about 5:00 or 5:30 for folks up here, so it's those outside hours. So we may be able to have someone in-house unlock the bathrooms in the morning, and then just have that contractor come through and clean and lock up of an evening. So we're hoping to get train station bathrooms, these bathrooms, and then potentially more in the future, if we decide to add more and it works out well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thanks, Nate. All right. Next is our manufactured and modular homes by Ms. Bork.
So yesterday, last Thursday evening, we had a public information session at the train station regarding some zoning updates and a little bit of education about manufactured and modular housing, and the changes that we're looking about at in town. And so, at least the zoning update portion, you are going to get sort of abbreviated version of that this evening. One of the major reasons we are looking at updating our zoning, other than the, the town goals of diversifying housing stock, and also the county's commitment to having, I think it's 30,000 new houses in, by 2030, we are also, the building codes for the state of Virginia updated, and they did some definitional splits that could be problematic for us, how we currently have our zoning written, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Additionally, housing costs are going up exponentially right now in the state of Virginia. The average, and we are right in the swim with the average. The average cost of construction, if you hire a contractor, is around $200 per square foot. It drops, if you don't have a contractor, to around 55 just for materials, but that, that's quite a substantial cost that people are incurring when they are buying or building stick-built houses. Also, our standards in our zoning right now are not compatible with the housing stock you see around town. We have previously allowed manufactured and modular houses to come into town without considering the zoning, and so I'm trying, with this update, the idea is to also make those compatible once again. Next slide, please. So our current definition for mobile and manufactured housing is a structure that is subject to federal regulations, which is transportable in one or more sections, is eight body feet or more in width, and 40 body feet or more in length, in travel mode, and is more than, is 320 or more square feet when erected on-site. This build is built on a permanent chassis, is designed to be a single-family dwelling, is with or without a permanent foundation, when connected to the required utilities when, including plumbing, air, et cetera. And such structures are defined here in, and they do not count as storage buildings, accessory uses, accessory structures, but can be used for mobile manufactured offices under certain circumstances. We are, the issue, the primary issue with this definition is that it, as it stands now, it is the only definition we have related to modular or manufactured housing, and the difference between the two is, one is HUD certified and one is DHCD certified, and we'll explain that, and I'll explain more of that in a minute. We do not have anything in our zoning about modular, and because of the way this is worded, it can potentially be argued that we also need modular, because it is moved to, from one location to another. And so we also, next slide, please. We also have the issue that all of our dwelling definitions currently are deemed mobile and manufactured homes not to be dwellings. So that includes single-family, duplex, and multifamily dwellings. And so we cannot, right now, use manufactured housing as a acceptable means of building on a single-family lot. We do allow manufactured housing in town, provided it is located in one of our manufacturing subdivision or manufactured park zones. The issue is, is that we do not have a manufactured park or subdivision zone actually in the zone in the town currently. We do have four manufactured mobile parks that are non-conforming uses, that are in our three zones, which means that someone can live there, they can replace a trailer with an exact same dimension, but they cannot, we cannot increase the number of trailers that are present in those particular places. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the building code update that occurred in 2020, basically, and the, the most important piece is at the very bottom, is they bifurcated the two building methods, mobile or manufactured housing are the same thing, state code defines it as manufactured housing, and modular construction, which the state code defines as industrial building. And they said they are not the same thing, and so we, we can't treat them as the same thing anymore either. Next slide, please. So we are proposing two new definitions, one for manufactured dwelling, that is a house that is built on a chassis, subject to federal certification, and current Virginia Building Code, where applicable, and has documentation that applicable safety standards are met and are assembled according to manufacturer and specifications. And the other definition we are looking at adding is residential industrial building, which is your modular homes, and it's dwelling, single-family duplex or multifamily constructions on one or more closed panel section, or modular, subject to state regulate, regulations, and includes all necessary components, systems needed to make for a safe structure under Virginia State Construction and Maintenance Code. So these are dwelling, manufactured dwellings are certified by HUD, and then they go through a process where they are inspected by the building inspector in certain places, plumbing is one, foundation is one, et cetera. And then with industrial residential, it is inspected by DHCD. It holds the same standards that we would have for a stick-built house, and the only difference is it's moved from a factory where it's inspected and erected, and there is a specific set of lists that the building inspector would then also inspect, but they're to the same set of standards that we would have for a stick-built house. Next. Our proposed locations for manufactured housing in town are going to be by right, meaning that someone just says, hey, I want to do this, we make sure that they've got, you know, there's, their setbacks and whatnot met, and they're allowed to, in R3, R3 are sort of the peachy ones or the tan ones on the map. R2 is the more lemon-yellow colored one, and that is expected to be R2s. We have a lot of diversification in neighborhoods, and so we're looking at special exceptions because if you get a, depending on the model of modular home, or depending on the neighborhood, it may make sense to put in a modular home, and then again, it may not. And so that gives, that gives you all and the planning commission a chance to look at it, ask questions, and decide whether that is part of neighborhood character or not. Next, please. So some general provisions we're looking at to ensure that modular housing is safe and equitable form of housing across the community, is that all manufactured have to be loc, that are erected outside of a mobile home, park, or division, have to be built on a permanent foundation. This ensures some state, this ensures stability, and it ensures things like if we have another hurricane, that they're going to be tied down correctly, and makes them about as secure as you can have a stick-built house. We are going to require one principal structure per lot, this is the same as if you were to build a stick-built house. They must meet minimum setbacks of the principal structures for those, again, same as a stick-built house. We are requiring that minimum square footage is 950 square feet. The reason for this is if you look at building an MS, if you look at building and housing data, the houses that tend to sit on the market are around 900 square feet and less. This means that we're building houses that will actually help our housing stock and keep our, our markets healthy. All manufactured dwellings must be recorded as real estate. When they come down the highway, they are considered personal property, they have a title, much like your camping trailer would. There is a process with the DMV where you can convert that to real estate, that means it's taxable, it's mortgageable, it is insurable, all of those things, and by, by enabling that, we are maintaining property value for the neighborhoods surrounding them, but we are also ensuring that they have as, as a, a robust system as a property owner as they can. Additionally, if it's personal property, just like your car, as soon as you drive it off the lot, it decreases by about half. Same thing happens with a modular, a manufactured home, unless you convert it to real property and then they appreciate in value. So we're, we're trying to keep the housing market solid in town. This, to ensure that people actually do this, we are putting in a requirement that within 30 days of receiving a certificate of occupancy from the building's official, they have to show proof of having transferred that from a title to a deed and filed it with the county's tax assessment off, assessor office. For industrial, for industrial buildings, we are looking at just putting in a general provision that says, we're allowing this as a building method, and that way, homes such as down on Pepper's Ferry that were built modular are just going to be part of the stock and shouldn't be a problem. Next slide, please. The other thing we're changing is we're just brushing up the current definitions to remove that phrase that doesn't allow modular and manufactured housing in normal dwelling areas, as a normal dwelling. Next. Okay, questions?
So I lost you for a second.
Okay.
That was a lot of information.
That was a lot. You did awesome. So our current zoning has a definition for mobile and manufactured, but it was not actually allowed anywhere outside of a mobile park, is that correct? Is that what I saw?
Yes, that's correct. Can we go back a slide? So right now, these are your definitions for single-family dwelling, two-family, which is duplex dwelling and multifamily dwelling, these are the dwelling units that we have, like, this is what people are allowed to live in if you're building a house. Or residential structure. If you look at that bottom sentence that's crossed through, however, the definition shall not be deemed to include mobile homes or manufactured homes as defined in this ordinance. That means we've just eliminated the ability to put in manufactured housing as a single-family home.
Just curious, and this may be impossible to answer for you, but have we, have we seen a desire or request to be able to do this on properties?
Yes.
And we've been in a position where we've had to say it's not an option?
Yes. I get it weekly.
It's a, it's a common, it's a common request.
I had it happen today, actually. Yeah.
And we have lots of these.
We have them.
We have, I mean, I, I don't know if you could say how many, but dozens or hundreds, maybe?
Yeah, we've, I, I would guess you are looking at, you are looking at, okay, so New Bern White, New Bern and Bob White, that like neighborhood is almost entirely manufactured, set on a permanent foundation. Clayton Homes, I think, did 98% of them. If you drive out towards, you're going towards Gatewood, a good number of those houses are, you wouldn't necessarily know it unless you know what you're looking for, but yeah, we've got a significant number of, of manufactured on permanent foundations in town that are currently part of our housing stock and being lived in.
I was curious, is it possible to go back to the slide that had the, the, the town map with the zones on it?
Yeah.
It's hard to see from up here.
I'm sorry.
I just, I, I guess curious, I, I think, I think all the work is, is awesome and, and seems to be very appropriate, the way that it's set up to ensure that in, in allowing this, that it gets allowed the correct way, to, to maintain what you're looking for, but in, in all these, in all of those neighborhoods, there's, there's kind of an, an already established look of homes and, and things of that nature, and I'm just curious to whether or not, if even the peach areas, you know, should require a special exception, not for the purposes of trying to, to prevent it, but for the purposes, because there's a lot of variation in, in those streets. And you easily could have one block where it made sense within that peach area, and the next block over, like, this just doesn't make sense, and on, on this street, and without driving up and down every street, I, you know, certainly couldn't give you a, a specific example, but to ensure that we aren't creating a problem by not allowing it, I think we're doing the right things by getting it out there to where we're not having to say you can't do that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But, but to, at the same time, to kind of ensure that we are looking at it on a case-by-case basis, to, to make sure that we're doing it appropriately, that's my only question, and it's impossible for me really to wrap my head around it just staring at that map.
So, but the, we're not voting on any, this is just a presentation, so we're, we're going to have a chance to look at this in more detail, right? Okay. The other question I have is, and the idea is that all of these, even if they are modular or manufactured or whatever, they're all going to have to be put on a permanent foundation.
Right.
Yes.
So they're all going to be, they're not going to be?
You're not hauling them off down the highway.
Okay, there's not, I mean, and then my other question is, I mean, sometimes the problem I see is, and I don't know if this is a zoning issue or not, is, you know, do we have a lot of the, on our existing non-conforming mobile park areas, are they lot rentals, or are they, I mean, that, that's my other question, because that, I think, is a big problem for, if we're trying to think in about housing stock, is thinking about making sure that there's some mechanism, because if you can't, if you don't pay your rent, then this house that you've bought or inherited or whatever is sort of stuck. And, and that seems like a problem that, that we could potentially avoid by building in some sort of like requi, requiring that be owned, or be, I mean, I, I don't know how that works, but?
I, I guess, a question for you, just to clarify, are you talking about mobile home parks, or are you talking about single-family lots, or multifamily lots, or?
I mean, I, I don't know exactly what the, what there are existing, so the, I know, you said we had a couple of non-conforming. Are they like, single-family individual lots owned, or are they a, they're, they're not of, like, a rental units that are owned by a?
What we have right now are mobile home parks.
Okay.
They are by definite, like, what we would define as a mobile home park, they need it, which means that for the most part, and the, I haven't checked into all of the models and how they operate, but for the most part, a property owner owns a large chunk of land, and they have divvied it out into basically campsites.
Sure.
And there are hookups there, and the person owns that, the unit, but they do not own the land under the unit.
Right, and, and that's the thing that I'm, I, I, I see, having seen this before, when you have problems legally with divorces, inheritance, whatever you, you call it, there can be this big mess.
Right.
Where you, you sort of devalue the, the property.
Right, so what's going to hap, this is why we're turning it into, when, when it's going on to a single fam, an R1, well, an R2 or an R3 lot, it is, it is going to be, you are going to put one house on there, it's going to be turned, converted into real property, which means it becomes a house.
Right, no, I understand that part.
It gets a mortgage, all of that, if someone were to get divorced, you're going to be fighting over it, much like you would be fighting over a house.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
That, that was my question, so, whatever happens to our existing stuff, we'll just have to deal with that as it happens.
Right.
But this is going to prevent there from being, without somebody coming in and getting zoned for it.
Right.
Which would require a hearing and all that stuff.
Whole mess, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, I think this is a great direction, and, and there's plenty of properties where this would make a whole lot of sense, and take a, maybe a property that someone couldn't, you know, figure out a way to make it work and turn it from a derelict property into one that's functioning, I think that this is an opportunity for some of those things to, to, to work out and make more sense.
And is the 950 square feet, is that something that's intended, you know, we, we've changed manufactured, we have single wide, double wide?
Right.
Is it intended to do away with a single, not permit a single wide, basically, so that minimum square footage, so are you primarily addressing what has long since been referred to as a double wide?
So you can have, there are, there is the possibility of having a single, single wide is just how many pieces it comes in, basically.
I understand what a single wide is.
So there are the possibilities of having a very long skinny house and having a single wide. Primarily, though, having a single wide is going to be difficult at that particular square footage. I think there's a couple models, but at that point, they're expensive enough that someone would probably go to a double wide because they're going to get a better square footage rate.
So when the, in these, in these single wide parks, where they're, they're basically just trailers that are for rent, or, or even if somebody owns the trailer and don't own the land.
Right.
When, or, or if any of those are moved, and they're, 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 they're not really allowed, technically allowed to be there. When they're moved, you kind of referred to something, it maybe was a grandfather.
Yeah.
Now, does that mean that they have to go on a permanent foundation at that point?
No, so what will happen is, in those four sections of town only, if you decide to take the old, the, for example, you decide to take the old 1950's Aero Stream out and put a new one in, you are allowed to do it, but you cannot make it a, you, it has to be the same size, it has to sit in that same square footage as the old trailer did. When, because there's no, like, it's, it's a continuation of a non-conforming use at that point, and so what can't happen is the owners are not able to sell more plots or expand their, their, their park and add more camping spaces, basically, but it doesn't mean that they can't use the ones they currently have. Now, if they were to change, if, if it were, that the owners decide to close it down, there, it's, or change ownership and that owner decides not to use it, within 12 months, then we can go, no, this went back into conformity, it has to be, you know, at minimum, at maximum duplexes, right? Based on the code. But as long as it's being owned by the current owner, it can be operated the way that owner has been operating it.
Okay, so, and this may be a redundant question, moving on, the, the, the yellow or tanned areas, is, is that currently a by right for a manufactured home at 950 square feet?
No.
Okay, so that would be then by special exception.
So right now, there is no, right now, currently as it stands, you cannot have a manufactured anywhere in town except for those non, so what we would do, what we're proposing is by right, and as Mr. Dawson suggested, maybe looking?
And that's what I was referring to.
Reconsidering and looking at it as a special exception.
You're proposing a by right in the yellow section?
We are proposing a by right in the kind of tannish-peach-ish section.
Tannish, okay.
Special exception in the canary yellow sections.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think Mr. Day will need to, you know, have a, a pretty good, at least I will, a pretty good overview, access to all of this stuff well in advance.
Absolutely.
So we can understand exactly what areas of town are, we're looking at doing.
Absolutely. This is a good opportunity, but Summer, great job, great presentation.
Thank you, Summer.
And you, you know, what I appreciate about that particular presentation is, I've had the opportunity over the years at two other localities to address this exact same issue, and the complexity behind it.
Thank you.
Is, you know, you, you had a perfect example of that tonight, but Summer's education and her experience and knowledge of what DHCD and HUD and even DMV come into play is exceptional, and I applaud her for that, so I feel really confident, we're going to work on the communication between the planning commission and the town council, Summer and I spoke a little bit about that today, we got some great ideas, so I think.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and Summer, you did do a great job, so.
Thank you.
One of the things that, that I think the town of Pulaski, and I can't see that, so I don't really know what, what, what areas you're identifying, but one of the things that, that the town of Pulaski has always had advantage over other communities is the, the old, the old houses in the old neighborhoods that are, that are very, that have not been corrupted, if you will, and they maintain that, that, that old feel, and the, and, and it attracts people, I think, to those communities, and those are throughout, you know, they're, they're all over the town, so I, I think we just need to be very, very appreciative of, of, of our history and, and how things could look going forward as we address this, so.
It'll take some time, that won't happen overnight.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm also appreciative of the history, so, I, I do, I, I, I look at that while, when considering these things.
Good deal.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you, Summer.
The next person up, too, so.
All right, so we'll move to the public hearings. The first one was the public exception, 24-SE-1, but the application was withdrawn, so we'll move to the second one. which is case number 24 dash ZA dash one and 24 dash ZA dash two. Amending section 11.2, town's definition of hospital and removing hospital or health center as a use from sections 4.1, 0.2 dash two, goodness gracious, 4.2, 0.2 dash two, 4.3, 0.2 dash two, 4.4, 0.2 dash two. Really?
One more, you guys.
4.10, 0.2 dash two, ordinance 2024 dash oh eight, the ordinance 2024 dash oh nine. Now, you don't have to say all that.
Yes.
Okay, so, Summer, would you like to explain before we?
Okay.
Do the public hearing?
So, we had, um, under the, uh, planning commission, once the, uh, issue of the no medical office was discovered and addressed, planning commission also asked me to look at the rest of the definitions in town and make sure that we don't have any that are, um, mentioned as uses but aren't defined, or we've got definitions that are defined but aren't uses. And then there are some definitions in the case, such as in the case of hospital, where they are just so, so we say broadly defined, that it's very hard for me to establish what the use is intended to be. Um, and so, i- in, in trying to, um, in trying to clean up our zoning, in trying to address some of the issues that are currently there with the zoning, because it's a living document and things happen, we are, planning commission opted to, to sort of tackle this one first. And we looked at, um, surrounding communities who also have hospitals. We looked at Pulaski County's definition of hospital, and we also looked at how the state defined hospitals to recraft a definition, so we have a more specified definition of what a hospital is. We also looked at the potential of needing, um, the potential opportunity economically of Pulaski's hospital as more and more, um, community and regional hospitals close across southwest Virginia. Being able to have that, we have a hospital and that's a wonderful thing. And so, we have that opportunity of becoming sort of a stabilizing hub potentially for other, um, other, as EMS is coming to bigger, more urban hu- hospitals to address, um, health emergencies. And so, looking, in, in the looking at the definition, we were also looking at the potential for, um, those economic opportunities for us here in Pulaski. And how can we ensure that those are present in the code as a use and that we can monopolize on the, or that, that our hospital, or if another one were to ever come, could monopolize on them if they had the option or the opportunity. We are still keeping hospital as a special exception, but in that, we did some transportation analysis, um, and we were looking at where, um, major arterial roads are in town, because if you've got EMS coming to and from, you need easy access to hospitals. And in that, also looking at, um, the potential for, um, if we were to have another pandemic, what kind of communicable disease and what sort of hazard might that, um, might that open up to residents? If we were to have, you know, a greater influx into hospitals, uh, our hospitals. However, we also looked at the fact that our current hospital is located in an R1 zone. It is along Lee Highway, that is an arterial, it's located quite well. And so, we don't necessarily want to make that so they can't expand that property. And so, while we are looking at removing, um, hospital from rural residential, R2, R3, largely because of access concerns, um, we are, and B3, again, also access concerns. You get into those small streets downtown, it's very hard, it would be very hard to keep a steady flow of ambulance traffic or physician traffic or whatever needed to come to be there and accommodate that. We also looked at parcel sizes, so if, if our current hospital needed to build somewhere else in town, is there gonna be enough land available? A lot of those parcels are available in the R1 and the B2 and the B1 areas of town. And so, in that, we're considering, um, limiting the number of places we can have a hospital down to R1, I'm sorry, yeah, R1, B1 and B2. And we also crafted, and the definition that we are crafting or proposing for the town ordinance is a facility licensed by the Commonwealth of Virginia, primarily provides inpatient diagnosis, treatments, psychiatric and surgical, serve, surgical care to two or more unrelated individuals. The following are acceptable accessory uses, outpatient diagnostic and treatment centers, substance abuse disorder services, rehabilitation facilities, medical offices, laboratories, teaching facilities, meeting areas, cafeterias, maintenance, heliports, EMS vehicle storage and parking facilities.
Does counsel have any questions, please?
So, so on the, the hospital, the, the, the new definition of hospital or health center, so, just, again, a lot of information. Do, our current hospital is located in R1, correct?
Yes.
So, where, where will the, this definition of hospital or health center come into play? Is it, it's, is it replacing?
The current one.
Hospital in the current, in the current zoning?
Yeah.
And, and, and where does that, where does that apply, I guess is my? Just from a town perspective, so I can get my head around.
Okay, okay, um, so, R1s are typically around, um.
No, I know what R1s are.
Okay.
The definition of hospital or health center, if I'm reading in, in the.
Okay.
I think he means it's a special exception to, and so, in those identified areas that are RR, R1, R2, R3, B1, B2, B3.
Okay, thank you, I, I think, well, I think that, just let me finish, I think that, that answers my question. So, so, hospital or health center will be a special exception to the, the, the R1, R2, R3.
So, there's, I think there's.
That's where they currently are allowed, yes.
But the proposal is, there's two things that are happening. One is that they're changing the definition, and two, they're also changing where that special exception can be applied. So, they're limiting, they're, they're taking the six or so zoning areas that you can apply for a hospital in, and they're dropping it down to three. So, they're, it's actually restrict, even though the definition's sort of a little tighter, they're restricting where it can be.
Right.
Applied for.
Right.
So, so in essence, based on this definition, if a special exception will, assuming this is all in place, if a special exception is granted for an R1 location, it, it will be a hospital or health center, which automatically, say in the case of our current hospital location, would allow substance abuse disorder services.
Yes, as defined, as adopted and defined by the definition that came before you a few months ago, as an accessory use, yes.
Right, which, a few months ago, that was, we, I guess we never even voted on it, did we?
I think that, that change was, was put into place, right?
Yeah, you guys have voted on that.
As far as the definition, I, I, the, I'm, I'm referring to the change to definition. There are, or the proposed change in the definition.
I, I don't, I don't think, I think our current zoning allows, if you have a hospital, you can have inpatient substance abuse.
Yes.
Treatment facilities. So, the hospital as it currently exists could just be a purely substance abuse, substance use disorder facility.
Yep, that's by state code, too.
Yeah.
Is that state code? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's medical and psychiatric care.
So, it, that strictly then applies to a hospital?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, then.
Other private facilities are not?
That's, that's what I was driving at.
Hospitals are an exception, that's what we're looking for right there. By state law.
And is that defined, because if I read this correctly, it says the primary, the primary use.
Right.
Is the diagnosis, treatment, psychiatric, surgical care of two or more related individuals. And then, the other option, the other items are just accessory uses, right? So, it couldn't, your accessory uses could not be the primary use, is that correct?
So, this can be ancillary to other medical services, but it is, and it is going to be primarily an inpatient operation, right? Like a hot.
Okay, I have a question, Pulaski Rehab, what's that zoned as?
Uh, right now, it's a non, it's a non-conforming use.
Okay. So, they, but what's their zoning?
B2, I do believe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Pulaski re, like, you couldn't open a Pulaski Rehab without going through the special exception process.
Process, and you would have to have other medical uses attached to it.
Right, but, I mean, like, a, a, a place like Pulaski Rehab would be, it'd be a, that would be primarily inpatient, primarily medical and psych, I mean, it would be a, that's the kind of thing that would be captured by that.
Precisely.
If there was another building, if they wanted to expand to another lot, they would have to go through this special exception.
They would have to go through this.
And if it wasn't a R1, B2 or B3, B, B1 or B2, it would have to be resound.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's also state code that works inverse to that. You have state code that protects them, but there's also state code that gives you tools to operate in your political, political jurisdiction for the best interest of the locality.
Right, I, I was just trying to get a sense of, like, not the, just the hospital, but like, I was just thinking of the other, the other facility we have in town.
Right.
That if somebody, but that wouldn't include, like, if there was a, just a over 50, you know, independent living facility, that wouldn't be covered by that.
No.
Okay.
Not right now, no.
Unless they had some higher level of.
Nursing care.
Nursing or medical care onsite.
Yeah.
And those facilities are also protected by state code.
They are, and we have a definition for those. We have an assisted living convalescent home, and I think it's nursing home definition.
Okay.
Um, and so, we do have that covered in the code. It, it also needs to be looked at, but it is there. And we also have hospice and several others as well.
Not, almost none of which are actually currently.
In use, exactly, yes.
They're, they're there if somebody.
Wants to.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, this conversation's came up before about the hospital, uh, being as, being R1, you know, currently and as, you know, as a special exception, basically, you know, to, to function, I know, as, as it is. And R1 and, and B1 and B2 are, are much broader categories of, of properties.
Right.
Than, I guess what I would consider kind of specifically what the hospital property is, right? And so, it's, there's a lot of other stuff going on there, and, and within those three groups. And, you know, it's, I guess it's been kind of previously discussed of that, that maybe do we need to address the actual grouping of, of some of these properties to where we could be more specific as opposed to, I, I understand it's a special exception, but we're just, there's this, we're basically kind of putting a big blanket down and, you know, on quite a bit of things and putting a special exception there to where if we kind of just regroup and say, oh, here's really, let's get more specific here. We're talking about here, here and here, that we, and, and creating the zone to where the, where we want the zone to be as opposed to trying to conform within what it was, if that makes sense.
Right, you, you can do that, but it gets very sticky. And I would say that, in terms of zoning, you don't want to create a use-specific zone, it doesn't end well. Typically, with, um, single, typically hospitals appear in residential areas or what are called residential transitional, which would be kind of like our ROs. And they are generally, um, held by special exception because the, the people who make the laws in those communities are aware that there are some negative externalities like traffic and, and noise and stuff like that that need to be mitigated, and that's why they do have, they, they put them the way they put them and the way we have them, honestly. We could look at, possibly in the future, doing something like a neighborhood plan or a small area plan, and in that going, okay, does it make sense to allow maybe for a hospital here? And if so, what kind of zoning do we want to put into place to kind of facilitate that? Small area plans work, are kind of zoomed in versions of comprehensive plans. Um, and so, it gives you that roadmap for the future. That is an option, looking at it down the road, if that's something that you're interested in, is how do we, you know, facilitate growth and kind of, but also, could, for lack of a better word, control the growth that we have. But, I, I'm, part of this is that we want to protect and, and my job is to also, as well as protect the town, also protect the right of the citizens, right? And so, if you buy a piece of property, you want the ability to have a little bit of flexibility about what you do with that property, right? And so, I think your better bet is to work on it through other means like, um, development incentives or something like that, rather than trying to legislate, less, uh, regulate it through ordinances and legislation. That's my personal opinion.
So, essentially, unless we want to, cuz there's not really a lot of space in town to build a large-scale medical facility anyways. Cuz even if you wanted to build a large office building between setbacks and access and parking, I mean, even if somebody just.
Yeah.
Just had a billion dollars and wanted to blow it on, on a, on a hospital, there would still be only a handful of places without massive demolition or something like that. That would be possible.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, and I think that, you know, along the lines of what Mr. Reese is saying is, I guess is where my thoughts are, is that it's very limited, the amount of property within the town limits, that's not very clearly already built to a, to a specific use. And where, and, you know, the majority of that, you know, in residential uses that very clearly, what, you know, the definition of, when you go out in this broad range, most of those, all the uses that might list within that zone would not make sense.
Right.
You know, on those properties, cuz they're very clearly residential properties, right? And so, I think we, we crossed the line into a lot of property that you kind of could look at and specifically say, that's, you know, that's not really what's intended there. And, and that, there again, just kind of, I feel like we could get, we could get, whether, I, I know you mentioned some other things, whether it's RO or whatever the appropriate thing is, and kind of get ourselves, not to the purposes of, I, I completely agree with you, you don't want someone purchasing a property and feeling like, well, I can only do this with it. But at the same time, there's, there's, there's some properties that you can make some pretty clear definitions. If that's residential, that person's buying that property shouldn't be intending on turning it into a business. You know, or vice versa, that this is an appropriate place for, you know, a business or a business of this nature. And, and that's, I guess, the thing that I'd like to maybe understand a little more clearly is where, where are we kind of specific?
Yeah.
And where is, where all bases are we covering under R1, B1 and B2?
And filter for R1, B, B1 and B2. Thank you, um, so.
She's prepared.
Currently, that's all, we're allowing that.
We're allowing it, we're allowing it in, I.
It's not actually, we're, we're just.
There are three zones in town, we are allowing it. And so, I'm actually with this, limiting it down quite substantially.
Right, I understand this. So, I mean, essentially, it's a fairly small percentage.
Yeah, and it's also primarily along East Main Route 11 and 90, what is it, 99?
Yeah.
So, the idea is, we're looking at it from a access standpoint and a how do we? And, and also from a parcel standpoint, like, where are our larger parcels in town? A good bit of the neighboring area, at least up here, you're, you've got like Hardy and Kreiser Elementary and some industrial stuff like that, so it's, it's, yes, you've got residential, but you've also got business in there. R1 is the, probably the most concerning, and because we've got it running down, that is where our current hospital is, short of making that a non-conforming use and basically making them incapable of expanding, which I'm loath to do. That, that is, that is why we've kept R1. That, that is, that is why we've kept R one in, and also because of its proximity to Lee Highway.
Could we just change the zoning of that property to, to, as opposed to having to change a whole group?
So there is the possibility of that, we do have some RO parcels over there. Um, and so there is the, the, um, the, the kind of funky one with a little bit of a, like, I don't know, tail sticking down, that's a little bit purple, um, is, is RO currently zoned, and it is, um, it is, it, we could look into rezoning that property as RO. But if you look at the other parcels in town that are RO, they're very small and they're very near the central business district, and so it, it becomes a little bit like, well, we can't, that's one parcel that we can have, and we're extending the use out to a very kind of inacronistic chunk of town a little bit.
But at the same time, we've got the planning commission, and this is what they do. And they've, they agree that this is the way to do it. I mean, that's why we have the planning commission, correct? To give the recommendations
Yeah.
for us.
And it's, yeah, and it's just that, it's a recommendation.
So, I mean.
We're trying to, we're just trying to vet the recommendation.
Is the highlighted, so is everything that's in pink and red and peach?
Everything that's in sort of buttercream and salmon is where you're going to be possibly putting a, uh, hospital. And that is very zoned into a very specific part of town right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, I think that's my concern, is, uh, all that buttercream is, is not is, is not appropriate places for a medical center or a hospital. And, and I, we've, and I get, we, we need that R one because that's where
Yeah.
where, because the hospitals are one, but we can fix that. As, as opposed to, you know, grouping, uh, so it's, I, I don't necessarily disagree with all this, I just feel like maybe, maybe we need another, uh, another step in it to where we can, we can, you know, get, we don't fix one thing and cre- you know, and I, I understand, we're kind of pulling back and we're getting it out of some other zones, but we were getting it out of some other zones because we had an opportunity with it, right? So in addressing that opportunity, we could take one more step with that, and we could pull, we could pull this out of a lot of places that it's clearly inappropriate.
I, I understand what you're saying. And I'm not, if, if that is something that you would like me to look into, I can look into it. What I am not, the other, the other can of, the other thing that you are opening up is we have a, the hospital is a fairly major entity in town, and we would have to partner with them and get them to agree to allow us to ideally to zone to RO, which we can do that, but it will be a process to do that.
So essentially, the options we have before us today are, we do nothing and it stays in R one.
Yeah.
We adopt this, and then it still stays in R one, but then we pursue some sort of rezoning, at which point then we could then amend, as part of that rezoning, amend whatever we wanted to amend, depending on what we change, if we changed it to B two or B three. We should also probably do the rehab center and, and some other stuff, just to make sure that they're all in the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, but essentially, if we do nothing today, we're, we're staying, standing pat means that it, basically, they can put it in R one.
Yep.
So.
With special exception, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but
And this would remain that way, yeah.
Mayor, I, I'd like to make a, a recommendation. There's a couple of things at play, and obviously, this has been on the table for a long time. But, uh, there's a, there is an intuitively obvious breakdown in communication, uh, that we will absolutely work on. And for a public hearing, this is the furthest from a public hearing that you will ever see. So I would heavily recommend that we remove it from the agenda, table it, and we will bring it back to you at a later date when we are more prepared. That is my recommendation.
All right. So do I need to get a motion to remove it, or?
You don't have to, you can just blow
Okay.
public hearing.
Well, we haven't even opened the public hearing.
Nor the one before, so we, we're
I mean, I, I mean, I'll say, I'm fine voting on it today, if, I, I don't know what other people feel.
I, I like the manager's recommendation to ta- to table until we, you know, till I'm closer not, you know.
And we'll fix it, we, we will absolutely fix it, it's just going to take I'll assure you, you can change that all you want, but if your multi-million dollar hospital wants to move in a certain area, I promise you, you will find a way to make it happen.
We'd, we'd, we would change.
Yeah, you, you're going to do it. So, um, again, I would heavily recommend, uh, until we can further communicate, uh, a little better, that we table this public hearing, um, and we move on to the next issue on the agenda.
All right. With all that, we will move, we will table that one.
We got to make a motion and a vote to
No, he said we didn't need to.
Yeah, we still have to make a m- a motion and a vote to table, don't we?
Are you going to make that motion?
We never opened it, so, do we need to?
No.
You didn't.
Just an update.
I didn't, no.
You never opened the public hearing.
Yeah, so it's not, I mean
You can just skip it.
I'm moving on.
Move on, yeah.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to FY twenty-four dash twenty-five budget. Um, Mr. Day?
Yeah, we'll open that public hearing now.
Well, do you want to give us the update first?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, my first time in, in Pulaski, uh, working on, working on a budget at the time, and was absolutely not the best in the world for me, starting, and, um, um, you know, because of the budget, the budget time of the year, but I want to, I want to thank staff, especially Jackie Moore. She has got nerves of steel, um, to put up with me in the last three months, but I do appreciate her, her tenacity and ability to, to put up with me, so, thank you very much. But with that being said, may I go through this, through this budget, um, as quickly as possible? If you have any questions, let me know. I am pleased to say, in the general, in the general fund, um, there are no, um, there are no tax-based fees or taxes that were recommended to be raised. There's return, there's a return check fee in the general fund, it's presently forty-five. As you are aware, we're raising it to, to fifty, and that is also with ACH and also e-payments. But when it comes to, to taxes, I'm very pleased to, to say we're not, we're not evaluating any of those in the general fund. General fund revenues and expenditures are equal, and they are as follows. Uh, revenues are ten million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, fifty-four dollars. Again, expend- expenditures do equal revenues. We also have another enterprise fund or a business account, however you term it, term that, which is the water, water fund. And again, revenues and expenditures do equal, which is two million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. In the water fund, um, in the last two consecutive years, I'm not sure what the rate increases in the water fund have been over those years, I don't have those with me. But I do know for the last two consecutive years, we've missed those targets. Um, we've also got two, um, debts that we have picked up, um, in the, in the water account that we are having to, uh, address this fiscal year. So, uh, you're going to see a ten percent increase in, in water for, for all those different fees, and the, and again, those revenues and expenditures do match, which again are two million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. The sewer fund is equal, we had, we had two consecutive years where revenues did not hit rate hike expectations, so we're picking up those. Uh, we also recognize the inflation, which I've sent out to council, um, over the last year on various items in the, in the sewer department. So we're recommending a six percent increase in both, in both wa- uh, in sewer. Revenues do match expenditures at four million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Solid waste revenue, um, we do, we're on, obviously, under at least a five-year contract with that, and we're not seeing any increases there. Revenue, revenues and expenditures are again equal at eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I'll briefly go over the sewer fund. As I mentioned, there's a six percent increase in there, so it'll be going from nine fifty to ten, ten oh seven. The current out-of-town is seventeen thirty, seventeen thirty-three will be going to eighteen thirty-seven. Um, and the meter sizes all have, you know, if you have a new tap in town that base, that base salary, they increase by six percent, and there's five, uh, there's a number of different brackets, five eighths, one inch, inch and a, inch and a quarter, but all these, all of those will be going up the same percentage. In the water fund, again, current town volume at ten th- at one thousand gallons is four oh nine, it'll be going to four fifty. And there's also other tiers there, I won't go through all of them, but again, that, all of them are increasing by the same, same value. One of local government's biggest challenges right now is also reflected in the, in the private sector, is salaries. And we, we were able to look at the police department, some in public works, uh, also the fire department. Um, and we will continue to, continue to try to retain longevity by recognizing salaries and the, and the demand in the market. So I've always had a practice of trying to keep those individuals to create longevity, which brings experience and wisdom to the table. And in doing so, you know, for the last two or three years, it's been an extreme move in target, so we've got a, over and beyond the merit, there's also a three percent increase in the budget for the economy, um, in the COYA. So I'm absolutely pleased that we were able to do that and sustain the general fund, no, no tax rate increases this year. So with that being said, Mayor, I've just basically went over the, um, the budget. And if you have any questions, um, I know it's a public hearing, but, uh, it's all I've got.
Does council have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, then I will officially open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, they can. And if not, all right, then we will close the public hearing. And then if you have any other questions before you make your, someone makes a motion.
Are we making a motion today? No, we're just having the public, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think we have to have a public hearing, and then we have another hearing to
Then we'll do it later on, I'm sorry.
Oh, there will be, I think, another chance for people to, if they, and is the, is the draft budget available on our website for people to look at?
If it's not, it will be.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's posted on there yet or not, but it
Okay, but it will be if people want to look at it, and, because there's, there's a lot of detail in here um, for folks, if they want to take a look at it, it goes, uh, if they're being able to see what we're seeing, it goes into quite a great, great amount of detail, um, so there's a lot to dig into. So thanks to everybody for putting that together for us.
We'll absolutely post what you've got in front of you on the website.
Great, thank you.
All right, with that, we move to the public comment period, I have no speaker slips, so. So we'll move to the consent agenda, um, for your consideration was the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Town Council meeting minutes.
There's no corrections, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Town Council Meeting Minutes from Tuesday, May seventh, as written.
May I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, move to the council comments, um, Mr. Reese?
Uh, I do not have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
No comment tonight, sir.
Mr. Radcliffe?
I'm good tonight.
Wow, okay. Mr. Clontz?
Nothing this season.
Mr. Reese?
Just two quick things, one, uh, went to the marketplace tonight, and it was great, so thank you to all the people who work hard to be, uh, put that together, uh, Pulaski on Main and some, lots of other folks who, um, take the time to do that, and the vendors who were there. It's a great, uh, great spot in town, and it's nice to see it being busy and full, and lots of great vendors there. I did have another question, I was noticing as we're getting into spring and there's leaves out and stuff, I've been noticing, um, dead trees, and, uh, I've, I have gotten over the years questions about if there's a dead tree on my neighbor's yard, and it looks like it's going to fall on my house, what do I do? And I, I know that, you know, there are some legal remedies for that, but is there anything in the town code? And I'm thinking about this in terms of not just, you know, trees that are potentially dangerous, but also is there, in the same vein, you know, sometimes I see houses or people complain about a house that has, you know, structural issues, I mean, maybe not if the whole thing's going to fall down, but like a porch or a roof, or, I mean, it just looks like it needs some work. And I don't know, I want to be able to tell people, go and, and tell your, you know, code enforcement or building official, or what's, what if any remedies do we have, do people have, if, is it through the town, or do they need to do it privately, or what's the situation?
If it's on private property, unfortunately, there's nothing in the code book that, that addresses that on private property.
Okay.
Um, it's usually domestic, so, um, when it comes to town right-of-way, you can report those to the town or town property, and we'll, we'll evaluate them. Um, we do not, we're not in the, nor is they go in the tree-cutting recommendation business, so it creates another monster for the locality, but, uh, it comes at a huge expense, but I don't know if that answers your question, but if it's on private, private property, unfortunately, we don't have a
Okay.
say in it. Now, you, you also mentioned structures, and I, I might have heard it wrong, but if
No, I did, yes, me.
Okay, if there's, if there's structures that are dilapidated, or you may have been talking about trees actually potentially falling on structures, but we do have a pretty aggressive code enforcement program for dilapidated structures.
So if a, somebody sees their neighbor's house with a
Yes.
something that looks like it's about to fall off, they can call code enforcement.
Absolutely, yeah, you can give the town a call, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, and when you say the town right-of-way, does that mean if it's, like, within how many feet of the street or something like that, basically?
Each street, depending on if it's a primary, secondary, or whether it's pre nineteen forty-seven
Mm-hmm.
after, they have different right-of-way requirements for V-dots, or every street's different. Some of them, you know, today, V-dot has a thirty-foot asphalt, fifty-foot right-of-way requirement, so it just depends on the route.
Gotcha. So case specifics, need to figure out where it is and talk to somebody and, okay.
And we'll go out and look at it, somebody will just call and report, you know, a tree that looks potentially dead or whatever, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, um, I've had a couple complaints of, up on Northwood, near the old Northwood School of speeding cars. We'll, sometimes we have a police officer sitting there, they slow down then, of course, but then when there's no car, when they turn and see there's no car, they fly, and the kids, and they worry about the kids in that area. Um, if we could talk to the chief and see what, I don't know what else we can do, other than send Mr. Stone up there and leave him all the time.
Well, I mean, the other question is, at what point can we put speed bumps on? I mean, if there are, if we identify someplace that has, I mean, I'm thinking of Mr. Reese's comment about the crosswalk by, you know, and I don't know, I mean, there's humps, there's bumps, there's dips, I mean, there's all kinds of rumble strips or whatever, is there, you know, I know there's a panoply of things, but maybe we could look into some of those too.
Right, we will, we can look into them, and V-dot does reckon, recognize a specific type, snowblades don't recognize them. But we will look into it specifically on, on Northwood and see what we can come up with.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all I had, so, um, now it's time for the manager's report, if you would like to
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, I might have brought this up at the last meeting, if I did, I apologize for being redundant, but we did close on sixty-seven, uh, so if you're, if there's been any slow movement there, you should see some prog- some progression on that street. So that was a MOM's, MOM's grant we had. Um, we also closed on Vima World, um, in the last couple of weeks, so, um, they have, um, it's my understanding, already relocated inside of our, all their operations here, it's my understanding anyway. So, a lot of great things happening, um, we've, uh, we're still working with the brewery, I got some email correspondence today on the brewery of the hundred and fifty-five or hundred and seventy acres. That is moving, moving ahead pretty quick, so hopefully in the next couple of months, uh, we'll be able to bring some, some good news back. I've always, also been in, uh, communication with David on the corner lot, uh, so I, I look for some, some changes to be taking place relatively soon. For the sake of time, Mayor, I'm good. changes to be taking place relatively soon, uh, for the sake of time, Mayor, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, as a reminder, our future Town Council meeting will be June fourth, twenty twenty-four, closed session at five thirty. Open session will begin at seven, as there's nothing else on the agenda, declare this meeting adjourned.